Alrighty, we will get started with the study session on Parks and Recreation Master Plan Overview.
Yeah, I'll make a quick introduction and hand it off to Jeff Hammond, Parks Director. As I think most of you commissioners know, we have a very extensive park master plan that can pull us in a number of directions and park staff have been working on projects and trying to work on budget and put a plan together and then you throw in COVID and some more economic and labor challenges as well, but what we have for you today is kind of an overview of that park master plan and a review of the priorities that came out of it and then some discussion of options going forward. And I'll turn it over to Jeff Hammond.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. As Mr. Schreick said, Jeff Hammond, Parks and Recreation Director. Some history of different plans and as I'm going through some of this introductory items, a lot of this can be found in the master plan that's available on our website. It's available at the City of Salina website under the Parks Rec Department and there's a tab on the left side that can be, that has a direct link to the master plan page. Some history, as you, some items in here. 1967 Parks and Recreation Master Plan was done. 1985, the Airport Park Master Plan, which kind of created space for the golf course and for Berkeley Family Recreational Area. And moving on to the next page, some different city items, a shared vision statement strategic plan were listed in the master plan documents. The items we're talking about today, Parks and Recreation selected Dick Horton Consulting to do our master plan and from our request for qualification process, Resolution 18-7851 accepted that master plan. A master plan priority matrix was, there was a study session done with City Commission on July 22nd in 2019 and then that master plan, or that priority list, which is included in today's presentation, was adopted by Resolution 19-7730. This priority, priority matrix supported and provided guidance to those parks improvements. The master plan was, some of the other items in the master plan, some, the master plan served three purposes. Gathering data from the community, serve as a guide for future development of our parks and recreation system and make sure we use tax dollars wisely, the sales tax dollars wisely. Again, as I mentioned, the master plan is available on our website and specifically pointed out in the Parks Rec Master Plan, $5.6 million of deferred maintenance in parks. And we identified 187 items of deferred maintenance to be addressed as part of that priority matrix. The priority matrix guide is the next set of slides. The guide was created with 12 items, it's two pages total of one document. I wanted to make sure it was broken down so you can see it. These are the different elements or variables of the guide that created the 187 priority lists and also the scoring of that list. So they were ranked based on a score, based on these 12 variables. And there are several pages here of those, of those prior, priority items. And I've included the full prior 187 items on the next six or seven pages or so of the There are several completed items. There's a slide dedicated to some of the items we have indeed completed. Most recently, number 46, we upgraded equipment and surfacing at Oakdale Park, oh, I'm sorry Hawthorne Park. That was in 2021. And most recently at Oakdale Park, we replenished safety surfacing, EWF or Engineered Wood Fiber Mulch at Oakdale Park. And we'll get into mulch a little bit later in the presentation. Current projects underway. Number 39, the playground at Lakewood Park was approved by City Commission as a sponsorship with Great Plains and that is on order. That's expected to arrive in August. We're currently always, every year, we do cemetery roads. At the cemetery, we intend on finishing those and I'll go into a little more of that when we hit the concrete section of the presentation. Bill Burke Park, we recently completed drainage to fields one, two, and three. However, we did not address under drains, which was part of the master plan criteria and that'll be included in another presentation we're probably doing later, or at least a commission action when we start with Bill Burke turfing in fields and hopefully that'd be to you, in front of you shortly. Country Club Park, we are adding to the playground. This year, we've ordered rubber mulch for that. Number 162, Salina Baseball Enterprises is addressing Dean Evans concession area and The number 168 was for Jerry Ivy Park. We ventured a relationship with USD 305 for them to renovate those courts. And 177, Kenwood Park where Salina Tennis Alliance is renovating and our, I'm sorry, not renovating, creating a whole new tennis facility at Kenwood Park. Sales tax, on April 20th, 2016, there was a mailer sent out about, about a slate of voting to, for a sales tax. The sales tax increase was approved. One of the items of that sales tax initiative was preserving our park system from sales tax. Through the capital improvement program, an annual allocation for park maintenance is requested. This year, that request was approved for $500,000 and that has been applied to our current fund balance for park improvements. The current balance of the park maintenance fund is $2,509,000. The current balance of the cemetery endowment fund is $533,000. Give or take. And on to the next, the next section of our slides about park improvements.
Jeff, if we can, why don't we pause there, see if there's any questions you might have? And then I've got one clarification, it was, as we drive in, dive into park improvements. But first, any questions on what we've covered so far?
Well, I, just on the, on 180 or whatever projects, you know, if you want to get into specifics now, but there was one at Bill Burke Park where the overlook was to be rebuilt to bring it up to code. I think it's 126 or 121 or something.
Are you thinking of Founder's Park by chance?
No, I think he's thinking of the railings and...
The railing where you look, it's number 126 on the prioritized list. And there was a comment to bring it up to, I've gone down there several times and, and it looks a little shaky there, wouldn't be a strong win. But if there's a code, hate to use the word violation the way it's currently constructed, just wonder if that should be brought up on the list just from a liability perspective.
Yeah, that caught my attention quite some time ago as well and, and I'm not prepared to say that it doesn't meet code, but the conversation prior to Jeff was if we had any code issues, we need to resolve them. So let us double check.
It's just a, I wouldn't want to send young kids down there by themselves.
Right. Yeah, there, there are railings and if anything, it may not meet ADA in terms of slopes and grades, that type of thing. But from a life safety code, I'm not aware of anything, but we can double check.
Okay. I had one, uncompleted items, number 151, remove soccer fields and redistribute. So that is no longer soccer fields there?
It is open space. It's green space. We do have soccer field, soccer goals available to play there. However, we're not doing recreation, planned or purpose recreation or competitive play there.
I might be mixed up here. Is this where they played soccer next to the river or on the other side of the dyke?
Other side of the dyke at Bill Burke Park.
Okay. I wondered if that could be used to alleviate parking.
That question comes up often. That is a Corps of Engineers levee and so traffic over that levee is not permissible. The, there is an emergency exit, which took quite a bit of work to get permission for.
I'm thinking people could park there and then walk over.
You know, they'd have to enter from, if they were to enter Bill Burke and have to drive over the levee and then walk back, that would be permissible.
Enter, enter from...
Oh, entered from the neighborhood, yeah. I don't know how many people practically would, would actually take us up on that, but we've always looked at it from the stand, with the expectation that people would expect to be able to drive over the levee park and then even then, I'm not sure that they would walk.
That's just one of the biggest complaints I hear about Bill Burke's park name.
Yep.
And on my way up here, I drove by to see the new baseballs.
We've had several conversations about parking at Bill Burke and I don't know if we've come to a consensus about what's the best idea to in fact, address parking at Bill Burke. We talked about parking to the north, parking to the south. We've talked about parking on the alternate side of Crawford, on the, on the south side of Crawford. So there's, there's several ideas been presented within staff purposes, however, we've not come to...
I guess there's no street access there and not where the soccer fields were.
Right. And we did fairly recently expand that parking on the north, which did add some spaces. So one of the things that, that we try to be mindful of is as something's going on, how much, do we still have available parking? Because I think we get, I think we get feedback that we're out of parking more often than we truly are out of parking, which is an indication of, you know, the desire to park near the field that you're going to versus park and walk. I understand that, but given the layout of Bill Burke boxed in by the levee on one side, the river on the other, we don't have a lot of remaining options for parking space. We, there has been some conversation about overflow parking, kind of where Jacob has his cursor, you know, the backside of those fields, but it still raises the question of would users appreciate that or would they view that as being, you know, too much work to number one, drive to it and then have to walk to their, their field location?
It's shorter than their walk at Coffin Stadium.
Or Walmart, depending on where you park at Walmart, but it's...
It's not going to hurt anyone to walk.
Yeah.
Jeff, on the, I noticed there's two projects underway that deal with the cemetery. Does, do those funds come out of the endowment fund or do they come out of Parks Maintenance Fund?
Typically, and historically, they've come out of the operational O and M budget for cemetery. Today, we present to you, which we'll get into a little bit, future slides, to use the endowment fund to pay for those improvements.
Okay. And then I guess as we get started, there's quite a list here. Are these items that you're, that we're not going through and picking, these are items that you wish to have completed over the next year or so?
That's correct. We wish to, we propose to, this, based on the review of the priority items and putting some order, some logic to how we want to address these. It's our intention to, this is what we propose to get done in the next year to two years and then come back to you and say, this is what we've completed, but this is our next marching orders to complete.
Wanted to make sure that was the way we were interpreting. Thank you.
And that's a good segue into the leading comment that I wanted to make. You know, we put that priority list together and if we went through them and just started at the top, you'd find, work on an ADA parking lot, take up three other projects, work on another ADA parking lot in a different park. And so as we looked at that, we started to identify some, some themes across the entire park system and some categories of work. And then we also frankly tried to look at, you know, what can we make happen with contracting the workout, something that we could expedite. And you've heard me say it time and time again, but when you think about back to basics, I think you're going to see the things that we're proposing and I think it should make a noticeable difference in the, how our parks appear and how they're received by users, but they are truly back to basic items of getting our house back in order.
I had a couple more here. I see merry-go-rounds frequently on here. Are merry-go-rounds banned now?
Based on my conversations with our park staff, no. As long as they meet current safety guidelines, to answer this question better, I'm gonna, I would need to ask one of our park staff come up if you...
Right. So regardless of whether they're banned or not, they're frowned upon by our insurance provider. They would rather they not be in our system. And so, and it's kind of a collective recommendation and I don't believe the merry-go-round is in Lakewood anymore, is it?
I'm seeing heads shaking no.
Okay. So I think you've got, you've got a list of items in there, including the merry-go-round? I think the merry-go-round's been addressed, but the rest of that item remains to be addressed.
Hmm. Kids just can't have fun anymore. And then number 180, Sunset Park Tennis Courts? Remove if constructed? Has that been finalized?
It has not been finalized. There's a future slide in this presentation regarding sunset courts.
I know that South Middle School really wants to keep and maintain those courts.
In terms of taking responsibility for them?
Well, maybe. We could work out a deal.
I'm sorry, did you say Jerry Ivy or Sunset?
Sunset.
Okay. We, we worked with them on, on Jerry Ivy, but hadn't heard from them about Sunset.
Mm-hmm. I have, well, we're getting ahead of ourselves, but...
South Middle Tennis Practices.
I have heard, I have heard from some neighbors from Sunset Park that do wish to, people that I've taken phone calls that have wished that we do keep some type of court there, whether it be a multi-purpose court or tennis court at Sunset Park.
So while we're on that topic, that, that, as we looked at tennis courts for the park master plan, as we looked at our budget and in advance of the soccer complex being brought forward, you know, it's frankly kind of a cost benefit analysis of what have we got? And the presumption was that we would repair and maintain what we had versus build new. And I tried to look up the, the dates of the Oakdale and Sunset Tennis Park, Tennis Courts before I came, but I couldn't find it. But both of them are very, very dated and they're showing their age. What, by the time we looked at what it would take to repair and maintain them, we concluded it just wasn't cost effective. So, you know, to replace them, you know, we now have a plan in place to replace them, but then if we just keep them in our inventory, that's what kind of drags us under in terms of just continuing to have ongoing deferred maintenance in our system. I, I really, I understand the initial reaction before you kind of dig into the, the details of what it would take to assume that, well, let's just keep it in our system. But if, if it was a wise investment or a cost effective investment, we would have been focusing on resurfacing those courts rather than replacing them just as part of our original planning. Now, an outside agency wants to take on that task, I'd be happy to talk to them.
Moving on to the second segment, parks improvements. As Mr. Schreick stated, trying to get some consistency with some, a modern twist or a modern look to, a modern standard for our park improvements. Picnic tables. So you see some pictures of our, of how we have wood picnic tables and that wood does get heavily used, needs to be repainted. Items number 50 and 99 on the master plan do indicate about, do talk about picnic tables and to refurbish them or replace them or repair. We have picnic tables in all of our parks. We have 608 of them and our proposal is to remove wood, refurbish our system or refurbish our inventory with new wood. We have made contacts with some outside agencies. Our park superintendent reached out to Ellsworth Correctional and they stated that they would be willing to paint and prepare two by twelves, two by tens at a 12-foot length. And we would just need to simply, well, I shouldn't say simply, drive them up there. They paint them, they prepare them, they route the edges to make sure that they are safe. And we have an inventory of wood to use to replace all of our benches or, not benches, I'm sorry, the wood on our picnic tables. The, based on the current cost of lumber, this would be about $16,000 of lumber. When using wood, does have to be painted. We looked at, we looked at treated lumber. However, staff prefers wood and this goes for benches, picnic tables and ADA picnic tables as well. Treated wood tends to warp or twist, so we would prefer pine wood. We've also made, park superintendent Rick Martin has also contacted Salina Tech, but we have at this time not made any contact with them. ADA picnic tables, similar concept. We have 43 ADA picnic tables within our system. Number 13 on the master plan is highlighted to mention ADA picnic tables. And similar to our picnic table, regular picnic tables, the ADA picnic tables would be replacing wood to refurbish all the wood in our system for ADA picnic tables at a Removing cement picnic tables. There's a picture of Kenwood Park with all of our concrete picnic tables. Want to make sure that I point out that the master plan in items 22, 23, 62, and 105 calls for, to remove those, some of those concrete picnic tables because of disrepair or because of crumbling. I wouldn't say disrepair, but they are, they are difficult to maintain. Some of the concrete breaks off and then rebar gets exposed and we have to make it safe, of course. And those are available, the ones that are itemized in the master plan are Sunset Park, Oakdale Park, Lum Felton Park, and Parker Park. And there's an inventory of where those are located. Prior to this presentation, we had tried to reach out to several demolition companies, well, two demolition companies that are in town and they have not returned our call about a demolition cost. Staff has removed these before, but it's a tremendous effort. These were built very sturdy and there's a large foundation that they sit on. We were estimating 1,100 hours each to have them removed. Bench examples, similar to picnic tables and ADA picnic tables. Items 14, 16, 17, 34, and 50 in the master plan mentioned park benches about replacing them or adding to. We have 100 park benches of various sizes in our system. We would buy new wood to refurbish this inventory of our existing park benches. Again, relying on a contractor to do so and having the wood available to us or driving those benches up, picnic tables up to Ellsworth Correctional to have them do it over winter. The estimated cost of lumber is 5,508. Before we get into drinking fountains, anything, any questions relating to wood, wood picnic tables, benches, or ADA picnic tables?
Is there any charge from the correctional facility to do this?
Not that they vindicated. They would be willing to do it. They just want to wait till winter. They have summer projects and we would, we would need to drive them up there and drop them off and we would need to go and pick them up. But they would not do it as a, there would be no charge.
Would the plan be to buy the lumber now and just save it till wintertime? Assume the cost may go up more.
Ideally, we would order it when it's best to be purchased.
We may order it now and hope to receive it by winter.
True.
That's the truth. You think I'm kidding? I'm not entirely kidding.
The concrete bench, tables. I think the concrete tables give the park character. They've stood the test of time. They can't be in that bad a condition, can they?
There were some that were identified in the master plan as being, should be, that should be removed. I couldn't say to their condition right now, today. I think when we find one that is in poor condition or in a disrepair, it does get addressed by our park staff. Sometimes, you know, corners get taken off and ground down to make smooth and, but I, there is lots of varying opinions about whether or not we should remove them or not because of the similar statements that you make, Mr. Commissioner Longline. They bring character, they're old, they're from an era, which, they don't make those types of picnic tables anymore. They should be worth keeping.
Do we have a record that dates those?
I do not. I have not seen a record that dates those.
Just kind of curious. But it looks like Sunset Park, 18 of them. That would be about all of them, wouldn't it?
That'd be, there, there's a lot in Kenwood Park. I think...
You got 18 in Sunset?
Yes. The, what was mentioned in the master plan is not all of our concrete picnic tables. We have many in Kenwood Park, Oakdale Park. So those are the ones that there was specifically identified.
Well, I would be in favor of preserving them.
At the risk of sounding like a contrarian, I've had my fair share of dealings with concrete and once you get to the point where you're patching and there's exposed rebar, it's just a mess. I mean, you're constant, it's a constant, and if I'm speaking out of turn, please correct me, but it's just one of those things where you're going to be coming back to it over and over again and more frequently. And I agree, architecturally speaking, they're very attractive, but to the guys that are maintaining these, I think it would be a nightmare.
Well, we're doing the same thing with the, the wooden picnic tables.
Wood's a lot easier to work with than concrete.
But it doesn't last as long.
True. And that actually brings up a question. Is there a polymer PVC product? I know there's a lot of exterior trim now that they're doing that with new construction and even remodels. And I know it's more expensive, but it's...
And I know it's more expensive, but in terms of longevity, and sometimes they even have a product in the finish that inhibits mold and mildew, that kind of thing. Is there an alternative out there for that project?
You're looking at alternatives to wood?
Yeah, I'm just, just throwing ideas.
It was something that we did address early on in this draft of this. There is some benefits to, for lifespan, for recycled lumber, or HDPE, recycled plastic, if you will. It can be marred, it can be melted. Vandalism could happen. And my personal experience, I went to a state park, and there was a table that had a repair of a recycled plastic table, and they, it was vandalism, they melted this section. It doesn't look, it removes the grain that they put into that recycled lumber. There would be, it would be more expensive on the front end, it could last longer.
Well, you convinced me at melting, because I hadn't thought about, I mean, you're not going to have cigarettes sitting on
Right.
trim, et cetera, versus this is an actual flat top, where it does make sense.
And yeah, there were cigarette stains that you can grind, but then it doesn't look the same. And you can actually melt it to get rid of the stain, but then it doesn't look.
I get it, I understand. Thank you.
Drinking fountains. Park staff, over the course of many years, the last five years that I've been here, have been replacing concrete drinking fountains with a more modern standard, which you can see the picture of what we buy. We get them locally through a local representative of this type of drinking fountain. The item, the ones you see on the list of where, that's what's remaining. There are twenty fountains, twenty concrete drinking fountains that we propose to replace. Hundred and twelve thousand dollars total. They are steel, and they're powder coated metal, powder coated paint, I'm sorry. And we want to keep them consistent color, which is green, which is that forest green color. They do come in different types. So the, each one would have an ADA pedestal, so they would all be ADA compliant. And there's different options, you can get a pet fountain, bottle filler. Ones, bottle filler ones are a little more expensive, but they, certain parks such as Oakdale Park would be a great option to have a pet bowl associated with the fountain. There's a regular fountain, then ADA fountain, and then a pet bowl that can come with it. Parks grills. And again, this is similar to the wood conversation, we want to be able, we have grills in our parks now. However, to look at a standard across the organization and modernize them, we would like to purchase new grills, replace them in our parks. We have forty small grills to replace, five large grills to replace. And we want to add some multi-surface grills, will be new to our system, which will be appropriate for certain spaces. A Lakewood Park comes to mind, where we have three shelters next to each other, and that multi-surface grill could be appropriate for that space. I had been, received questions, they, it seems relatively inexpensive for these grills. We have, we do have a supplier that we've worked with before, that's, that's why, that, but they do have a great price for a commercial outdoor grill that takes a lot of wear and use. Park signage. As you're familiar, I would imagine you're familiar, we have, we have a modern standard of sign. Recently, Berkeley Family Recreational Area, where we put in new signage for that area once we had the name change of the space of the park. Also recently, we replaced five newer, modern park signs where we had some fading of those spaces, we recently completed that. There were two at Lakewood, Oxbow Park, Riverside Park, and Thomas Park. However, we still have many, fourteen of the wood entrance signs that are in the picture. There's Woodland Park and Oakdale Park that are shown as examples that we would like to replace with a modern standard sign. The master plan calls out these in many items, thirty-four, fifty-five, sixty-five, sixty-seven, eighty-eight, one oh seven, and one oh eight. They are rather expensive. What I mean by expensive, I guess we have for sign. For example, when we put in the Berkeley Family Recreation Area signs, they were about seven thousand dollars each. And that includes putting them in concrete, and, but they are rather, they're made to withstand the weather and the sun, and... At this point, is, are there any questions regarding signs, or drinking fountains, or anything we've covered as of yet?
Have any of those drinking fountains been in place yet?
Oh, yes, there's one at Sunset Park that I'm, I'm very aware of. We're getting ready to put one into Oakdale Park, near the playground.
Where's, where's, the Sunset Park is the only one you have?
Oh. I, I don't know the full inventory of where they're at, but I can, I can have someone come up and address, answer the question.
Okay, I, I just wondered if I had seen them or not. Didn't realize it.
Yeah. Jerry Ivy Pond Restoration. Items number nine and eighteen of the master plan. Specifically talk about the pond at Jerry Ivy Park, to include a wall and edge restoration, and include some type of circulation component. We have started to drain the pond as of last Friday. It'll take about three weeks to drain that. The draining is for the, just for the purpose of trying to combat blue-green algae issues that we have, have reoccurring. Matter of fact, this winter, we really didn't ever have anything other than a warning or a watch of that space. It didn't get cold enough to, the water didn't get cold enough to kill off that blue-green algae. So in an attempt to try to put ourselves right for the summer, we are draining that and refilling it from the available well. There is a significant amount of sediment on the bottom that has a high phosphorus content. And most likely, that blue-green algae will return, but hopefully, we're, we're buying some time. We have conversations with a few different landscape design and civil engineering firms to try to get some ideas about how we want to proceed. As you're well aware of, some of the problems with this pond. They've identified some, that there's moisture behind the pond, moisture behind the wall. The shallow depth of the pond allows for sunlight to get through to the bottom. It also makes the temperature increase, so we don't have any cold pockets that would keep blue-green algae from forming. As of now, from the civil engineering and mechan, civil engineering and landscape designers that I've talked to, a mechanical circulation or filtration solution has not been recommended or provided by them.
So, putting a finer point on it, we had a design prepared, presented, and actually had a cost estimate from a designer, but we've yet to find, get to the point with a designer where they have identified the problems, identified a solution where we're not, not just going to replicate the, the challenges we're currently facing, and then put a cost with that. And so Jeff's been working hard to find someone that has enough subject matter expertise to, to speak to that. And, you know, that kind of takes us back to the conversation the governing body had prior to the beginning of this year, about, you know, the desire for a water feature, what that might look like, and what it might cost, and, and having to make that initial project decision. And until we get to a point where someone can just objectively tell us, here's what it's going to take to have an effective pond in that location, and not replicate your blue-green algae problems, not replicate your water quality problems, I'm not comfortable bringing forward a project or a budget to you as the governing body, because you may just be buying another version of the same problem. So, we're also looking, you know, or at least having conversations about alternate water features. If, if we can't find a way to have a pond that's healthy, is there an alternative? And Jeff touched on it a little bit, but there's not enough flow into that pond to cause it to circulate. It just gathers water and sits there, and, and doesn't cycle through. Which is why we're starting to have the conversation about mechanical circulation and filtration, but I doubt I have to tell you that that comes at a cost. And we don't know what that system is yet, yet, so we certainly don't know what that cost might be.
So you're, you're going to drain the pond and then refill it? Will we not have the same blue-green algae issue by refilling?
We could, and we're hoping to buy ourselves a little bit of time, but it, it doesn't solve the broader problem of lack of inflow, lack of turnover, the shallow depth of the pond. It is a temporary measure at best.
Is there a reason we wouldn't just leave it empty until we decide how we want to proceed? Is there, what's, I guess, what's the pros and cons to, to leaving it empty?
Part of, part of it's going to be the aesthetics, I think part of it may be the aromatics of it, if we leave it without water in it. And then I doubt that, I don't know that the water structurally is, you know, all that important, but just trying to get it back to its current state until we have a, a design and a proposed solution.
Would that pond fill up with rainwater, nor, under normal circumstances?
I don't know if any of our current employees have direct experience with that, but they all seem to be shaking their heads no. There's, there's just not much watershed there, and what watershed is there is a combination of street and yard runoff, so probably contributing fertilizers and nutrients to our algae problem.
Would it be practical, once it's drained and dried out a little bit, to dredge that?
It'd be, it'd certainly be an opportunity to do something. However, we have not pursued any quotes on that. We also have not pursued any permits that, to do with the sludge that we, or the sediment we do get. We have to apply it somewhere.
If we were committed to keeping the pond, then dredging would probably be a possible step. I, I started to say solution, but it's not a solution to the, the algae problem long-term, so.
And the problem with dredging that is, if I remember right, there's a chemi, or something that's put on the floor, because that pond was leaking, wasn't holding water.
Clay liner to, to get it to hold water in the first place, so.
Yeah.
You, you couldn't make it deeper, per se, you'd just be grabbing whatever sentiment you might have, we might have accumulated. I mean, and, certainly up for discussion, but I think we've reached enough of a conclusion that, that an alternative needs to be found. We're in the process of trying to find, find that alternative, so I don't know that we're headed towards investing a whole lot in Jerry Ivy Pond as much as we're trying to find a, an alternative.
Next slide is rubber mulch. We have a mulch, whether it be rubber mulch, or engineered wood fiber mulch in all of our playgrounds. As I mentioned earlier, we recently raised our Oakdale Playground, the new playground that's near the stage, we raised that three inches to the desired height. We have some playgrounds that have rubber mulch, and some that have engineered wood fiber. We prefer not to mix the two together, so if we have a playground with rubber mulch, we tend to buy rubber mulch. If we have an engineered wood fiber, we buy engineered wood fiber. Engineered wood fiber is significantly less expensive than rubber mulch. However, there are benefits to rubber mulch that I've listed on the page. And I also, as mentioned, Country Club, we recently ordered country, rubber mulch for Country Club Park with the intent of addressing the whole space, as well as adding a swing set to Country Club with that rubber mulch. Rubber mulch is ten, ten times more expensive. However, it does, it's heavier, it tends not to break down. You need less rubber mulch to maintain a height, or fall height for safety, you can get in different colors. The estimated cost to replace, replace mulch at the identified parks, sixty-four thousand for rubber mulch, engineered wood fiber, forty-two thousand. There are a handful of our parks that I mentioned on the top that have sand surfacing. It's our, our intent to remove sand from playgrounds. It's not an ADA acceptable surfacing. And that forty-two thousand dollars for engineered wood fiber mulch does include that process to remove the sand surfacing from those playgrounds and replace it with engineered wood fiber. Want to make sure I point out that we did, in fact, as I mentioned, we added three inches of mulch to Oakdale Playground. It's not a once-and-done process. We would need to come back three to four years from now and add another two to three inches, depending on what it needs, because it does break down over time, but it is cheaper. So park improvement estimates, the last, the last park improvement, four hundred eight thousand dollars was the total of what we had proposed to expend from that park improvement sales tax fund. Any overall questions regarding park improvements? So, next, the next segment is the Parks and Recreation, Park Restroom Renovation. As part of a Bill Burke in baseball, we also presented to you at a study session about renovating our park bathrooms. I believe it was, the park restrooms were on, shown on the page here, is what we planned on renovating. Downtown bathrooms were included in that. We maintained the three downtown bathroom units as well. The scope of work of each of these restrooms, and if you recall, some of the master plan items, and also some of our complaints about park bathrooms have a lot to do with moisture, wetness on the floor, humidity, smell. You know, a, a older outdated surfacing, whether it be paint, stained concrete. So the proposal and the scope of work related to that is to remodel them and refurbish them, and bring them up to a higher standard. Including finishes, epoxy paints, epoxy, epoxy surfacing on the floor, lighting improvements to make them brighter, to, also a high-volume air exchange to increase the amount of air turnover in the space. New partitions, better fit, or the same fixture, so sink, toilet, lavatory, or handle, water handle. And this would be work that would be self-performed within our system, through our facility maintenance, facilities maintenance division. Recently, our facility ma, facilities maintenance division did some epoxy flooring work at the fire department. They used an Everlast epoxy flooring, which has a twenty-year life. They are, they are They are certified to use that product. They had a certified installer come and do a training session, which gives us ten percent off purchases. Some of the benefits of epoxy flooring are listed on here. But it could be sealed finish. It's non-absorbent to stains or odors. And I have a series of pictures of the fire station work in progress and the finished product. The previous surfacing was ceramic tile, and they went, they put the epoxy flooring over that tile. That was in Fire Station Three. Recently, on March seventh, I came to you with a proposal for, to add, to amend the pay plan, the city's staffing table, to add two construction technician positions to the facilities maintenance division. And that will be funded from the Parks Master Plan funds for the life of the project, for the scope of work of these bathrooms, and solely for these bathrooms, to accomplish this objective. We've advertised for those positions for approximately four weeks. We do have a handful of applicants. There's HR, human resources stated that there are more that I have expressed interest through advertising. Interviews for those positions will start soon. This was the park bathroom renovation budget that was proposed to you. Trying to remember the date, I believe it was February of two thousand twenty-one. It was when we had the baseball and bathrooms conversation. And this was the budget that was presented at the time. Some inflationary costs will need to be applied to this model. This was the budget that we would be working with to self-perform this work within our facilities maintenance division. Again, I'll take a pause here before we get into concrete to open up, open up, you know, ask if there's any questions relating to the park bathroom renovation.
Yeah, here in the budget, you got security on all of them. Are we going to put surveillance cameras?
We, that was our intent, to put them on the outside, towards the door.
Similar to what they have downtown now?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Then this budget expense, that would include the monthly fee to run the cameras?
This was the, this was the budget created for them to self-perform the install, not for the ongoing maintenance. So, that would be coming out of Park's operation and management budget. But yes, there is a monthly fee for some of those, depending if you don't have a power source, or I'm sorry, you don't have a data source, so you're relying on a cellular connection, yeah. And the last segment, sidewalks, ADA parking, and concrete improvements. Parks and Rec staff work with Public Works and Engineering to develop this list, to assist us with this list and to provide estimates for concrete. All concrete estimates are recent. Speaking with engineering, city engineering staff on Friday, they didn't feel that they needed to update their numbers. They are based on recent. So, Bill Burke Park is our first one. Identified improvement to parking challenges at Bill Burke Park was identified to put a berm across the entrance there. Just to point out, this is not a direct master plan item. However, there is some talk in the master plan about parking challenges at Bill Burke, but this is not a direct master plan item.
And you said berm, but I think you mean curb along the, to preclude straddling the edge of pavement and parking and blocking the entrance.
Next is East Cloud Parking Lot, another identified area that we have challenges at. It is not in the master plan. This is the Trailhead Parking off Cloud Street. Now, we do get several complaints in the area about negative activity, and police sometimes need to respond. Founders Park, Founders Park is number one eighteen in the master plan to provide concrete improvements. However, with this proposal, this potentially could be jeopardized by a future river renewal plan that this sidewalk that we are proposing here might not be available to us to do so. So, our recommendation is to put this on hold at this time. But you can see some pictures of Founders Park, that it is of concern. I did include a slide of the River Project, some of the proposals for the area. Gypsum Hill Cemetery, number seventy-one on the master plan item, master plan priority list. You know, seal coating, the older road started in two thousand, oh, that says two thousand twenty-three. Oh, it's, we'll start, I'm sorry. Thank you. This is, you had, I believe, Commissioner Hoppin brought up, addressing this out of the Cemetery Endowment Fund. Be twenty-nine thousand to finish the gravel road replacement. There was also a planned improvement for the Marymount Entrance. And we would use cemetery endowment funds to address these concerns with the cemetery. Indian Rock Park, number ten. Number ten on the master plan is a all parks or various parks item, where it states, without a lot of specifics, to address concrete in various parks. We identified some improvements for Indian Rock Park. As you can see, listed. There's also a master plan item relating to the Indian Rock Lodge that calls for improvements and a upgrade to the lodge. And the item around, so be the, let's see. The second item on the table patio around lodge. We would recommend waiting until that project is done, or waiting to we include that in a project for the Indian Rock Lodge, which is number thirty-three. The lodge patio concrete will be completed as part of a separate project and not part of our proposal today. The, the red item on the map of Indian Rock Lodge. We would propose to close that area off, and the entrance and exit would only be one location. We do get several washouts during heavy rains through that area. It washes gravel away. We would close that off as part of this proposed plan. And several pictures of Indian Rock, of course.
Just out of curiosity, how many days a year is the shelter house up there rented?
Rented a lot. I don't know the numbers, but it is a popular attraction.
I mean, I kind of forget it's up there, and I just, but I was just curious as to.
I would have to speculate, without looking at any numbers. It doesn't get reserved, however, the first-come, first-serve use is tremendous. We get a lot of traditional reservations of shelter houses at our destination parks. Sunset, Jerry Ivy, Oakdale. I think that is more of a first-come, first-serve type of use shelter house at Indian Rock Park. Jerry Ivy Park. Lot of ADA connectivity to playgrounds, to shelter houses needed at Jerry Ivy. Several of the smaller shelter houses, we do not have paths currently to, if you're in a wheelchair, for example, we don't have a way currently to get to those shelter houses. We don't have a path to those shelter houses. The stretch of concrete in the middle of the park is sunken and cracked. It often is a area where water accumulates, so we're replacing that. The North Shelter, as you can see, some pictures. And its need for improvement or replacement. Kenwood Park. There was a proposal from staff to include additional parking for Kenwood Park. There is, I would say it's informal parking near Petals Flowers for Kenwood Park. We proposed to add parking, which would assist in the access of that park. We have two very large shelter houses, two playgrounds in that park. We don't have dedicated parking for it, except for that informal parking near Petals Flowers. However, this is not a master plan item, and we propose to defer this for future consideration. It also could be helpful for large events at Oakdale. However, whether it be Smoky Hill River Festival, or KKOA, or overflow for Kenwood Cove, if needed. Lakewood Park, we have two, we have North Lakewood Park and South Lakewood Park. Where, again, a sidewalk to the shelter house on the north side. And then on the south side, we have some connections needed from the parking lot to the existing shelters. When you see the picture of the three shelters together, that's where one of those multi-tier grills would be used. Oakdale Park. The first slide of Oakdale, we did have some connection issues to shelter houses in those two areas. Right now, those are gravel parking lots. We propose to replace them with concrete as part of the master plan. We have other items in Oakdale Park that we identified that are also gravel lots. However, they're not identified in the master plan or called out in the master plan. We are looking to either defer this for the future. There's also some staff, there's an area that would be a road closure bypass or a, an increase in size of our fenced storage area outside the Oakdale Park shop. We would look to fund these from operational funds or defer for the future. Quickly through the, well, not quickly, but Pacific Park, Phillips Park, Riverside Park. They currently don't have dedicated ADA parking. Their proposal was to add ADA parking for those spaces. And that specifically is called out in the master plan to increase or add ADA parking to several parks. Schilling as well. Steve Holly, adding ADA parking. And a connection to the playground at Steve Holly Park. Sunset Park, it's a, we do not have some dedicated ADA parking at Sunset Park. We've identified some, many improvements to Sunset Park. Parking for the playground to the north. Parking for the Veterans Memorial in the middle of the park. Also, some concrete improvements that need to be accomplished. So, we have some concrete there that's crumbling or looking worse for wear. The south edge of Sunset Park, we talked about this a little bit earlier. Number, item number one eighty on the tennis courts, I'm sorry, item number one eighty on the master plan, identified removing the tennis courts if a new tennis center is constructed. The current state of the surfacing is poor. A concrete lot has, on the bottom of this page, was three hundred fourteen thousand dollars to change that into a parking lot. Another option could be to demo the tennis courts and reseed it with grass. However, we're just kind of getting into conversations with that space as to what we need to do. That parking lot for Sunset Park would also provide parking, needed parking for Bondi Fields. We don't have existing ADA parking or any parking for Bondi Fields. There is an alternative version of, ultimate version for Bondi Field to park, to provide parking. And the estimate for that is eighty-eight thousand. And the last concrete slide. We have various improvements for playgrounds to provide a ramp to enter into the playground. We have nineteen of those that need to be completed. Before I continue on the last couple of slides, any questions about concrete?
On Bondi ball fields, are those used much anymore?
They are. They are primarily used through the ball season. So, a lot of people do use them for practices leading up to the season. And once the season starts, it's one of the primary practice spaces because the, all of our fields are used for programmed leagues and practices. I'm sorry, program leagues, then that becomes the, a primo space for practices to occur.
So, no one's playing games there anymore?
No games scheduled. And we also have identified use for that age group, thirteen to fourteen age group, that are willing to, or want to use that as well, because there's a lack of, there's just a high number of people that are thirteen, fourteen, or U thirteen, U fourteen, that want to play baseball, and we don't have that size field. Bondi is one of those fields.
I do have one question, goes back one way. For the Cemetery Endowment Fund, what do people usually think they're giving that money for? When it, I'm assuming these are donations and bequeaths?
My understanding is the maintenance and enrichment of the cemetery. Is the stated purpose of the fund.
As a new commissioner, I'm wondering how the cemetery is under the Parks and Recreation.
They drew the short straw. The other answer is, that's the way it's always done. I don't know, other than that's just kind of how organizationally it's been.
It fits closest to them. From the other department.
Just curiosity, what, the capacity of Gibson Hill Cemetery, is it?
If I can defer to our park staff.
We really haven't reached capacity yet. I would have to get some numbers from Dennis Arnold, who takes care of the cemetery. But we are getting closer to reaching capacity. You know, recently he put in the columbariums, you know, for, in the niches for, people are cremated, put them in there. Just to try and help save some of that space. But, you know, going back to the question about the endowment fund too, is that at some point when the cemetery is full. Part of that, I think, is to help with the maintenance of the area after we're no longer. Customers, so to speak.
Is there a long-term plan for breaking ground on new cemetery?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think so.
We've talked some, some of these numbers in strategic planning, and I think we did enough kind of projecting forward at our current pace that identified it's not as imminent as it might seem.
See what capacity, what percentage of it is from being full.
Of course, as, as more and more people are cremated, then actually it just kind of adds to the longevity.
I guess we need Commissioner Ryan here to chime in on this.
I will find an answer for you, the percentage of how full we are. And there's also, like Mr. Strick said, there is a date when we've identified that date, so I'll find that out for you.
Okay. Sunset Park, you talk here a lot about the Veterans Memorial. I know there is a group, a committee working on placing additional bricks for the memorial. Have any information or update on that?
They have not given me an update. They met with us about nine months ago. We verified that we are holding funds approximately 30,000, and they were inquiring about if we had the funds available still, and we do in fact do. And that's the last I have heard or talked with them. But I know they're working with various agencies and doing some fundraising.
Last I heard, they were having trouble sourcing bricks to match.
To match.
What's there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll check up on that and see where they're at.
Last two slides. We have talked, this is a summary. We talked about in the beginning, it was approximately 1.5 million of total identified costs within park improvements and concrete. We did some, I would say, looking at this conservatively. And identified some possible deductions to that concrete expense. And that was, came up with a number of 538,000 of what we would propose to proceed with concrete improvements. Based on not being master plan items and using some of the funds for cemetery purposes, using the cemetery endowment fund to fund those. And that's how we, so from 916,000 total, I'm sorry. Yeah, 1.5 million of concrete improvements. We are deducting some for this exercise, for our proposed future plans for improving concrete in parks. Add of 538. So the last slide, again, staff have reviewed the prioritized list adopted by the city commission. And our proposed plan of work. Again, I stated 1.5 million we identified, but after the proposed deductions in cemetery funds and operation and maintenance funds. So the total financial conclusion, our fund balance is 2.5 million. Our park improvements would be 408,000. Our proposed concrete improvements, 538,000. Leaving a balance of 1.561 million dollars in that park maintenance balance fund.
And I ask what might be an overly simplistic question, but if the money's there, why not spend it?
Jerry Ivy Pond, bathrooms.
See, I told you.
Indian Rock Shelter, trying, trying to hold back some, some balance to kind of revisit the other items in the priority list and start picking off some of those big ticket items.
So it's just reprioritizing the items.
Yeah, well, this is, as I have described it, I, back to basics, kind of making improvements across the, the system that were identified in the park master plan to begin with. Trying to do it in a, you know, comprehensive systematic way. Hopefully, it makes a noticeable improvement in the park systems, just in terms of how they present themselves. And then we can start identifying some of those individual items that are called out in the park master plan, such as Jerry Ivy Pond. That one, I think, is almost unavoidable, given the condition. Some of the other items that, you know, show up in that, that prioritized list, we can have conversations as we tackle them, but.
Does get us close to addressing the basic unaddressed routine. Manages, you know, things that if we don't do them this year, are just going to be twice as bad next year to repair. I mean, is that list?
Yeah, if I understand your question, are there other prominent deferred maintenance items that we're not addressing as part of that? Is that kind of stating?
Said it that way, but yes.
I don't want to put words in the Parks Department's mouth, but that's kind of where we started this conversation, but. And the one thing that occurs to me is trash cans. We had 55 gallon barrels throughout the park system with some wood structures around them, if we can, and those are surprisingly expensive. If you want to do the decorative type trash cans, that might be an, an item. We did metal roofs throughout the park system, so we placed those, and then painting, I think, is the other.
Painting is what I was going to add.
Go ahead.
I have had recent conversations with, trying to get a painter to give us a quote is, we've had a terrible time. We're looking at painting of shelters, large and small shelters. Kenwood Park train, we haven't had a whole lot of luck trying to find someone who is a professional painter who's experienced. You know, painting is 80%, 90% prep work, so. But recently had a conversation with College Works. College Works primarily recruits towards college students to provide them summer employment. I wasn't really, I didn't really have a chance to talk with the city manager regarding it, but I did get a quote over the weekend for painting of shelters. Seems reasonable, but it, all of our park shelters could be painted for $57,000. And that is having college students primarily prep areas, scrape, paint. Put a base coat, sorry, a primer coat on bare wood and then paint the entire shelter. But that's a large item as well in the master plan.
That's appealing, that approach is appealing to me because it is piecework. They're paid for each project they complete, rather than we hire seasonal high school students and pay them by the hour, regardless of quality, regardless of productivity. We kind of know what we're signing up for and we're contracting for a result. The other thing that I would say is, you know, the Parks Department, as we've had these conversations, has repeatedly said, well, we could do that in-house. We could do that ourselves, and we have a long history of that, and I appreciate that, and they can, they, they've got the skill set. But as we know, given our staffing, we're trying to keep up with mowing, we're trying to bring some seasonal work, staff on board to drag and line ball fields and, and keep up with our maintenance obligations, which I think is how we found ourselves, why we find ourselves in the deferred maintenance situation we're in right now. This is kind of a shot in the arm, wanted to say a shot of adrenaline to the heart, but that, that analogy may not be the best.
If, if you use someone like the College Works, do they have a professional that supervises that? Because as you said, the prep work's very important.
The, they have, the structure, if you will, is they have a regional manager who is a full-time employee of College Works. They hire leads, so there might be a lead for Salina, a lead for Manhattan, a lead, and then that lead is a college student. They go through a training exercise, they go through, they actually identify houses to train on, and then they train, and then that's overseen by someone that's training them. After that, they're on their own. I had a, I'm not sure if it's a blessing or a curse, but I worked for College Works for a summer in college. So I have a little bit of a basis of understanding, but. So it's, it's primarily college student driven, but they do pay attention to detail, they do understand that prep work is the, is vital to their success. Because they warranty, they, it's a, like, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sure, I'm not sure what the warranty is, but it is warranted work.
On another subject, how are you doing hiring seasonal workers?
Being in mid-April, not as well as I would hope to be. Right now, we're probably around 25 lifeguards, for example, at the pool. We have one or two applicants for our summer camp. It's not as great as I would want to be, we're still actively recruiting.
It's a struggle like everywhere else.
It is.
I think Mr. Morton had a comment.
Go back to your question, sent a text to Dennis, and what he said is we've got about 1,500 full spaces left at the cemetery. And generally, we kind of average between 100 and 125 burials a year, so just maybe 10 years.
10 years, interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that was the conclusion to my presentation, unless there's only, any other questions I can ask.
Well, so we can preserve a few minutes before the other meeting. Does anyone in the audience have a question or comment? That hasn't been addressed? Thank you, Mr. Hammond, Mr. Strick. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's four o'clock, April 11th, 2022, this is the regular Salina City Commission weekly meeting. Ask the city clerk if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you, may roll call, please.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Linkwitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
All right, there are four of us here today. All who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a proclamation today.
Item 3.1, recognition of the week of April 11th through the 15th, 2022, as National Work Zone Awareness Week in the city of Salina. Tilden Crable, street foreman, will read the proclamation.
Proclamation of City of Salina, Kansas, whereas construction work and repairs to our roads must be done with traffic on them, putting both motorists and workers at risk every day, and whereas workers diligently continue to improve, rebuild, and maintain roadways, so motorists can safely and efficiently travel throughout Salina. And whereas in Salina, in Kansas, during 2020, two people were killed and 400 people were injured in work zone-related crashes. And whereas nearly 90% of the people injured and killed in work zone crashes each year are motorists, making work zone safety important to all citizens. Whereas 62% of these fatalities and injuries were caused by inattentive driving following too closely and speeding in construction zones. And whereas to reduce fatalities and injuries, motorists must remember to set aside distractions and be extra cautious and give work zones their undivided attention when traveling. And whereas, safety on the roads is a shared responsibility, and we all must do our part to keep our roadway safe. And whereas, the city of Salina is dedicated to enhancing work zone safety for both road workers and motorists. Now, therefore, I, Trent W. Davis, MD, mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of April 11th through 15, 2020, as National Work Zone Awareness Week. And the city of Salina and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves in the issues involved in work zone safety and to recognize the contributed contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and the quality of life while working under these adverse conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Crable, in just a minute, I'm gonna have you come up front to get the signed proclamation, but.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming you don't want us to run into you while you're working, but it's.
Correct.
What 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 else can you do, or thi- this is your free time, who, tell us what what we aren't doing that we should, or what we.
Well, the big thing is always staying off cell phones, paying attention to vehicles in front of you, looking ahead. As far as on our part, we try to set up as much temporary traffic control to give enough advance warning by setting out our signs and road cones, channelizers, delineators, and all that other stuff. Just to help to ensure paying attention, also not veering too close to those construction zones. A lot of the times, we can only take up, we try to take up as minimal space as we can, so a lot of our workers are up very close to the the traffic control that we do have. A big part is just slowing down, paying attention.
I learned the hard way that those great big heavy plastic ones on the interstate.
The drums, yes, sir.
Yeah, with the ones that stick up, that mark the lanes.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, those will take off your side view mirror if you get too close.
Yes, they will.
And it wasn't even a fair fight. Thank you very much, I'm appreciative of the pins.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how you guys stay in some of those in July and August, those things get.
They're actually pretty breathable.
Really?
Yeah.
Come on up front, please.
Yes, sir.
I know we appreciate the work you do, it's like the linemen who have to go up in the polls when the power's down in a in a thunderstorm. We're all ready to complain our power's out, but nobody wants to go out there to help and fix it. So thank you for a job well done. We will now move to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of April 4, 2022. Item 5.2, authorize the submission of a grant application by the city of Salina to the U.S. Department of Transportation for an FY 2022 Raze Grant for the Smoky Hill River Renewal Project.
Is there any item a commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mayor Davis, I'd like to remove item 5.2, please.
Sounds like a popular choice. Thank you, in that case, is there action to be taken to approve the minutes of April 4?
Remove or approve the minutes?
In a second.
Moved and approved, approve the minutes of April 4, 2022, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries four to nothing. And now, item 5.2, the author is Mrs. Tasker.
Yeah, I guess the the reason I pulled this is it's a fairly large item, and I think it'd be, would make sense for us to discuss a little bit about where the funds from the city of Salina come. Also verify that the Friends of the River Foundation has the dollars that we're talking about, and then also, I know we've had issues getting a response from the Corps of Engineering, are these projects we would do or we will not do if we if we do not get Corps of Engineering dollars, so we could address a few of those, Ms. Tasker?
I'll try to think of the best order to cover that slate in.
I threw it at you, it's up to you.
All right. Years back, we roughly allocated about 27 million for the river renewal project from the sales tax. And out of that, we thought $10 million would come from the Corps, which, that's one of your questions, and maybe I'll save it for last. Seems like the hard one.
Okay.
So, to date, with the Corps project, as they slated it, select and alternate to, the city's share is 5.24 million. And the Raze Grant that you have in this document is 2.72, or 8.27 million, or a total of 13.51 million. And to date, on the project, out of our 17 million that's calculated to be available through the sales tax, we have spent 3.5 million, so roughly 13.5 million dollars left, so. The numbers are fairly close there from that standpoint, and Debbie can go into further detail if you're interested in how the dollars lay out over the next several years from the sales tax, so those two match up fairly well. And the Friends of the River have had discussions with Guy Walker and Jane Anderson, and I think I saw Jane on. We we all, the city and Friends of the River, have to include a letter in the grant application that indicates our our dollars are are available for the project, so it's my understanding they're working on their letter. Can I just veer off track for a moment, like to introduce Kylie Galien, and she's with a fellow working on this grant from the fellow program. And she might be able to say that better than I do, but I'm gonna ask her a hard question. Have we got the letter from Friends of the River yet? Do you have Debbie's letter? All right, but the Friends of the River and my discussion with them, they had talked of 3.5 million. And so they're working on their letter, I've discussed that with them, I know they're on top of it, is that what you've learned? So, we'll have a letter to go in our grant application to say they have the dollars.
Okay.
So, city dollars, Corps, what happens if the Corps doesn't go forward? Okay, this grant covers additional aspects over and above what was in our original Phase 1 project. It has the, all of the bridges, the boardwalk, the Fourth Street Plaza, just a large array, all things that we would need as a part of our river renewal project, just a little more. And then the Corps independently on their, in their project, what they're slated to do for us is the entrance work, clean out the channel, and do the steps behind the community theater, and remove the dam, is basic, is their basic part of the work that they're gonna do. And early on in the project, we had discussions about whether we would hang on for the Corps, or would we just want to go on by ourselves internally with HDR and myself. So we put together some estimates of, could we go on without the Corps? And 5.2, or 5.24 million that we put into the Corps project, based on the numbers I have from 2019, and I inflated them up, we'd be able to get the inlet structure and the gates to allow the water in and the sediment removal. Based on the numbers, that's around $3 million. And then the remaining dollars, I calculate about 3.5 or 4 million to finish up the work around the community theater and the steps. So we wouldn't have all the dollars to do every piece of that unless Friends of the River was in for their 3.5 million dollars out, but all in all, if the if the Corps doesn't come in, we have the ability to get the water moving and do the project.
That's my main concern, is we we do all these bridges, we don't do all this, we, then we don't have flowing water, which.
So, that's always been, and it's not something we talk about out loud, because everything to date, the Corps is still interested in getting the project done. They're working on it right now, I get a progress report, they're reviewing their numbers again, that scares me, but.
Did they, have they got the funding, because at one point there, that was part of the problem.
No, they have to finish their feasibility study, and then that'll have a cost element with it and get approved. Then the next round, they'll be looking for design dollars and the construction dollars to move forward in the previous, in the following years. But we've tried to keep in the back of our mind, could we still have a a project? What we wouldn't have was all of the riffles and the deeper areas and the wider areas, and I'll call them the habitat enhancement that was included in their project, is what we'd be missing.
Okay.
Does that kind of hit?
I think that helps, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? That was a lot for some of you that are fairly new.
I I know people are starting to get a little impatient.
Oh, I'm aware of that.
I imagine people got you on speed dial.
Yeah, they're, they.
I liked what you had to say, that we could get water moving.
Yes.
If that were to occur, get water moving, because I'd just like to see water moving and see what happens.
We'd like to, and if we were designing all of the bridges and building those, it would make better sense for us to do all of that work while the channels dry.
Right.
We'd like to get the water moving after our bridges are all in place.
My question is, if the Corps drags and drags and drags on, as this progresses, could we get water moving and then have them come back when they're ready?
That is a question I'd like to talk more with them about to see, because if we spend certain dollars ahead of them being, signing our agreement with them, then our dollars don't count as our in-kind share of their project, our, we still have a 25% share in their project, so. Timing is of the essence, I think, and what we're gonna find out is on this grant. Now, will we get 25 million, or will we get something less in what the components, so we're gonna have to be nimble on our feet to think about whatever dollars we do get, what does that mean to our project? And then that'll be in August or September is the current plan of this year. The Corps is moving their their process, they tell me by the end of the year, first part of the year, they'll have got it up through headquarters and hopefully be approved and will be on track. So those times are fairly close together that we should be able to have to make some, I don't know if I'll call them easy or hard decisions at that time, finding out what what happens with the Corps, but it's all about the funding and trying to not throw dollars away. If we spend dollars in advance in it of having our partnership agreement, then we can't count those, so.
In the sense of urgency is understandable, we had a public input process and and then had representatives from the Corps and from our designers here, and, you know, we identified it as a decision point for the governing body, recognizing that it was, you know, kind of a tough decision, but we felt like, the collective decision was, we wanted to hold out in hopes of securing that 10 million from the Corps, so hopefully we'll know something soon, but it is testing all of our patience.
It's definitely Friends of the River and their board members, members and those that have contributed dollars to date for the project are, they remind me they have shovels in their trunk and they're ready to start moving dirt, so they're anxious, so.
But all these.
They're they're anxious, so.
All these bridges are on us, and.
Yes, and I'm, I hope by the end of the year, with this grant, it it would be wonderful if we'd get the 25 million, because it would really make us be able to do so much more for this project than we originally had planned, so.
Yeah, it'd be great to get them all done before anything else happens.
If if we were approved, are we approved for a total amount or a percentage of amount? Or is it project by, do they go into the nitty-gritty of each, well, we like Bridge 1, 3, and 7, but not the others? Or is it just, we'll give you this percentage of what you're asking for?
I have no idea how they might lay it out. Mr. Woods, you've been through it in your, you know, what would you say?
I'm not sure about that either, I think they they probably would just give you a percentage, and then you'd have to ratchet your project back to to match whatever funding they they allowed. But I do think that this is a program that we, this is a program that's been around for a long time. It's required to be spent, some dollars are required to be spent in Kansas, and they put an emphasis on rural, and we're rural enough that that I think we are pretty competitive. And there's additional dollars that were put into this program specifically with the the infrastructure bill that passed. So there's more money now than there has been available, and I think this is a project that would be pretty competitive. The other thing is, is we're farther along in the design and actually having a project ready to go than than most people will be. It's a pretty intensive, as as Martha knows, it's a pretty intense application packet. I mean, it'll probably be over 100 pages by the time we're done putting it all together with feasibility, so. The timeline to to submit the grant was shortened this year, so shorter timeline, us being farther along, having some rural, I think I think will be competitive, but I don't know whether they'll say, you get 25, or they'll say they might, you know, they could ratchet it back for sure.
That would be those decisions, we'd have to be nimble on our feet to decide, and on top of that, we'll have at least 50 pages of support letters from individuals in our community and our legislators and senators and so on. So 50 pages is almost unheard of, according to our consultant, to have that many letters of support. So we have, the community's behind the project.
So where are we at if this is denied?
Be back having the hard talk with you.
We're back to the Corps and and local funds.
Yeah, and trying to work our way through what's the best interest of us through the process, but we did, as Mike said, made the decision to go for this grant in August and match up with the Corps and lots of funding out there, we just gotta see if we can get our, our, I call it fair share, whatever that is. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments from the public on this?
Dalton McDowell, Salina. If we would go and do it without the Corps, the Corps controls how much water goes down that river. Are they gonna control how much? Are they going to control how much water goes into that, into the new channel once we get it all done? Or is the city got control of those gates? Who's got control of what? That's a big question.
I'll let Ms. Task ask, but I have a feeling it won't matter who paid for it, depending on how much water there is.
The Division of Water Resources controls the water and we currently have a water right for them to move water out of the Smoky Hill River Channel into this channel as a recreational.
And that's one of the things we secured before proceeding down this path.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Ben Winholz, Salina. You touched base on the fact that a lot of this, we're waiting on the bridges. The bridges, through the research that I've done, are basically going to be put in to appease the canoe and kayak population. They aren't needed to make the water flow. Culverts can do the same thing, which is what they've done before. So I don't understand why we would, are waiting or basing everything on new bridges when bridges are not important in the first place. Thank you.
Well, they aren't necessarily important as far as the water flowing, but looking at the total aesthetic of the whole project. Some things you can add in after the water's flowing and others are going to be harder. It's, you know, I'm not so much worried about this whole project being done when our term is up. It's, you know, five, eight years from now, just like downtown. We could have taken some shortcuts, but you walk out there now and you look at Santa Fe and say, wow, glad we waited for that. Or we delayed this, thought about this three or four times and put money in that. It's to get a great finished product at the end. And, you know, eight years from now, one to two years isn't going to seem all that much, much longer. But it will be great when it's, when it's done. That's my personal opinion. Ms. Tasker, come on up.
Agree with everything you're saying there, Mayor, but I might add, some of the, like at Ohio Street, the north crossing and the south crossing and at Iron, some of those streets with heavy traffic will now have a, an underpass for the pedestrians to go under the bridge instead of across. And that's what a lot of our work over the last month or so through the engineering department has been looking at accidents and injuries. And we have had a fatality or two, I'm not sure, I think it's two, that have occurred because of crossing the, these roads. So getting our students underneath Ohio Street instead of crossing on top and down at the south end, we crossed that several times working on the trail project and you got to time it and move fast. So it's not all about just getting the water moving. There's some safety aspects to this also. And then as you open up some of those bridges, then you have to consider whether you've made the blockage downstream from there and created a flood issue for potentially the community theater if we don't do something to Ash and Elm to let the water flow through under Iron. So it's, there's a lot of factors that come together to tie the project together, if that helps any.
Thank you.
I got one question for, just curious. The Lakewood Pedestrian Bridge, is that the one that comes over toward Ohio from the school?
That's what I call that, but I don't know if that's what it's identified on there. I think there's a pedestrian bridge out at Lakewood Lake that's, we're talking about doing there. Currently, there's a bridge that crosses the river channel.
Off Iron Street?
What's that?
The one off Iron Street?
Yes.
Is that the one we're talking about?
No, there's another pedestrian bridge that's planned out by the Lakewood Lake. And that's included in there.
Okay.
It's separate from the one you're speaking of. At North Ohio, there would be a pedestrian box under Ohio that would, would keep them from crossing Ohio, but then they could get back on the bridge and go without crossing the high, the Ohio Street.
All right. Thank you. Jane Anderson is online and, or not online, what is this called? On Zoom?
Zoom.
And like to address us.
Good to go.
Jane?
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, couldn't be there because we have plumbing problems at my house, so I had to be home. But Martha did say, what I was going to say about some of the bridges are actually necessary. It's not all for boating. Some of it really is for Ash and Elm are too small, the culvert. And, and South Ohio is, is a bridge that has to be replaced also. So it isn't just for boating and it is for safety and for the flowing river. And also, I just wanted to add, we do believe there'll be more infrastructure dollars coming through the federal government. And it's possible, if we don't get the raised grant, that there'll be, we can use some of the materials that have been developed for this grant, that we could use it for others. So we feel like there's going to be other opportunities for us to write some more grants as a possibility.
Thank you. I like that optimism. Seeing no more comments, is there a motion forthcoming?
Mayor Davis, I move we approve the submission of the United States Department of Transportation application for a fiscal year 2020 Rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the submission of a grant for the fiscal year 2022 raised grant funds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for or nothing. Thank you for all the participants and comments. We'll now go to administration.
Item 6.1, Discussion of Charter Ordinance 39, Issuance of General Obligation Bonds by Cities of the First Class.
Just back.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance and Administration. KSA 13-1024A authorizes cities of the first class to issue general obligation bonds to finance construction and general improvements. However, it minimum, it makes a maximum allowable amount of $100,000 per year. Because this statute applies to the city but is not uniformly applicable to all cities, it is subject to charter ordinance, meaning that the city can pass a charter ordinance providing for different or additional provisions. Like many cities, the City of Salina has provided substitute provisions for this statute over the years under multiple charter ordinances. For example, in 1977, the city adopted Charter Ordinance 13, which increased the city's maximum amount of bonds that could be issued from 100,000 to 250,000. Again, in 1988 and 1989, they raised that, that maximum amount from 250 to 750 and then again to 900,000. In 2000, the city adopted Charter Ordinance 31, which specifically gave the authorization to issue bonds for a family aquatic park in the amount of 5.5 million dollars. In 2001, the city, because of this, this original statute, issued Ordinance Number 32, which allowed construction of waterwork and sanitary sewer systems without an election of $2 million, provided authorization for an animal shelter of $900,000 and reduced the amount of the, for overall purposes, back to $250,000. In 2003, we introduced a, a different type of categorization for the bonds, because at that time, we realized that there were different projects that needed specific amounts that, that it just wasn't feasible to do this. So the city adopted Charter Ordinance 33, which set aside different categories of purchase, of bond issuance, for example, for streets, bridges, public parks, public buildings and stormwater drainage systems and water and wastewater sewer systems. They set a maximum amount for each of those projected, for each of those project areas. Under Charter Ordinance 39, we added, we included a category H for $7 million, which was specific to the fieldhouse. So as you see, over the course of many years, 40 years, the cities adopted or changed this ordinance to adopt to the situation that they needed to do. Staff has consulted with bond counsel. We do have a member at bond counsel on the line with us and financial advisors. And I've learned that many cities of the first class, while they've adopted charter ordinances of substantive, substantive language, they've opted not to, to make a maximum on their bond issuance. There are also, beyond the charter ordinance, there are also many statutes that allow us, that give the authority of municipalities to issue bonds. The city most often uses those other statutes to issue bonds, so we don't have to fall back to the charter ordinance. For example, the city recently used KSA 12-685, a main trafficway statute to allow for the Ninth Street Bridge and KSA 12-1736, which is the public building statute for the fire station project. The city typically only relies on the charter ordinance when there are no other statutes that allow us to authorize issuance of bonds. Typically, those fall into the park improvements projects. For example, when we did, for example, when we did Kenwood Cove in the Salina Fieldhouse, we did through charter ordinance, issued exceptions just for those two particular projects. This discussion arises now because back in July of 2019, City Commission approved a resolution expressing intent to support a public-private partnership with the Salina Athletic Partners for baseball and softball improvements for the City of Salina. The city's share of the public-private partnership is $4 million. During the 2022 budget session, City Commission indicated that their desire was to fund $1.5 million of the city's share with cash and remain, and fund the remaining $2.5 million with bonds to be paid from transient guest tax. Per Charter Ordinance 39, Category C, we are limited to $1 million issuance of bonds for park, for public, or for parks improvements per year. So with the assistance of our financial advisors and our bond counsel and legal counsel, we have inventoried a list of options for you at this time that we'd like to bring forward. The first option would be to repeal Charter Ordinance Number 39 and replace it with a Charter Ordinance that does not set limits on the amount of bonds that can be issued per year. And the reason we feel this is, has merit is because there are four other times during the process of debt, issuing debt on a project, that those projects come before you. The first time is when we approve a project at the budget cycle in the capital improvement program. We bring those projects to you, we say, we're going to build a bridge, it's going to cost us $3 million and we anticipate issuing general bonds and obligations. At that point, you have the authority in the, you tell us, yes, we want to proceed with that project. The next point in the, in the process is when we come for project authorization. This is a specific resolution that's, that gives us the authority for that specific project to issue debt. At that point, if you chose that we didn't want to issue debt for that particular project, we would either have to cancel that project or we would have to find alternative financing. The next point of approval from the City Commission is a temporary note issuance. That is our, our temporary financing for most projects, which is just the cash to get us started through the project. That comes before City Commission. And the, really the commitment of the project comes when we bring you the contract award. When an award is bid and we bring you that, that authority to approve that contract, that is when we're, we're committing ourselves contractually to the commitment. So that is the, really the final time that you have the authority to say, no, we don't need to do, we're not going to do this project or we're not going to issue debt for it. And finally, the last time is through the bond issuance, but by that time, it's really, we've already proved that we're going to move forward with that one. So that option does have many levels of approval that are already built in throughout the statutory requirements of issuing debt. The second option we brought, will bring forward is to adopt a Charter Ordinance and repeal Charter Ordinance 39 and increase all of the bonding limits to come in, for all of the project categories, to come in line with more realistic costs of those particular categories of projects. As we've seen over the years, from 250,000 to today, we have a category for streets that's a million dollars. That may not be even feasible at this point in, in time. So this might be a consideration is to look at those costs per individual project category. The third option is to adopt a Charter Ordinance and repeal Charter Ordinance 39 to increase, increase the bonding limit on parks improvements only. We've seen this arise as an issue with Kenwood Cove now and with, with the fieldhouse, sorry, and with the irrigation system. We had that issue with that a couple of years ago that we ran into the same issue. So that is an option to, to raise that limit just on park improvements. And the fourth option is, is to specifically adopt a Charter Ordinance and repeal 39 to create a specific category, as we have done in the past, for this particular project for the public partnership of $4 million. As I noted before, several of the other, there are several other cities that have issued ordinances and I provided you with some of those examples that don't limit that amount. This item is only for discussion and we would just like to get direction from you as far as what, where you would like us to go as far as this particular project. But we thought this was an opportunity to go forward, to make some changes as we, as you might see necessary. So we're just looking for a consensus from you to do that at this time. And I would be here for answer questions. I know Mike is, and also Mitch Walter from Gilmore and Bell is on the line.
Yeah, I think one key point, procedural point to make, just so that I'm sure you're there aware of it, is in the Charter Ordinance adoption process, it provides for a 60-day protest period. So if, in the current format, if you were to amend the current provisions by way of adopting a Charter Ordinance, there will be a 60-day period that we would let the protest period run. If a successful protest petition is submitted, then that requires that to be voted on by the community. And so that's kind of the element behind charter ordinances that would, wouldn't necessarily take place if you were to amend this and, and create more open-ended authority to issue debt.
So just to make sure I'm clear, so if, sorry, if the option was to replace it with a Charter Ordinance that does not set limits on the amount of bonds, there would be no protest period?
Right, because the protest period attaches to all charter ordinances. And so you, by adopting that one overarching charter ordinance, you, that ordinance would have a protest period, but subsequent debt issuances would not.
Let me start with Commissioner Hoppe and we'll work our way down.
Do you have any questions? Comments later. Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I have a concern with debt with no limit. That scares me.
Well, we are limited by, on debt, by a legal debt limit. The state, we are, by state statute, we are required that we can only issue so much debt based on our assessed valuation. So 30% of our total assessed valuation can be, so the city is covered by a legal debt limit. Currently, we are at 43% of that limit. So there is some controlling factors of, it's not unlimited in that respect.
And then I guess I would add, in terms of oversight of the debt, you as a governing body are the ultimate arbiters of that as we bring, as you take action on each item.
Right.
So approving this would just streamline the whole bond process in that?
Not necessarily everyone, because like I said, there are other statutes that allow us to issue debt without using our charter ordinance, but it certainly would keep us from having to use it for whatever, if there were particular instances that we didn't need it, that we couldn't find another statute. So in that respect, yes.
Okay, thank you. Was the original purpose of KSA 13-1024 to limit the amount of debt the cities could issue without elections, I'm assuming?
Correct.
So there've been more and more exceptions to the rules. Does that statute still have any real teeth?
I would turn to Mitch for that. He's on the line. I'm not sure if Greg would know the answer or not. I'm not sure if Greg would know the answer or not.
I think I do, but Mitch Walter, or I think Sarah was on the line as well, am I correct?
Yeah.
Certainly, either of the representatives of Gilmore and Bell could give you a much more statewide perspective on that question.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. Thank you, Debbie. This is Mitch Walter with Gilmore and Bell. Yeah, so this statute allowing for general improvements for first-class cities was first enacted in 1955. There are a number of statutes that are very similar to this regarding the authority to issue general obligation bonds for all sorts of different public improvements. I mentioned that the statute was first enacted in 1955, which of course predates the Home Rule Amendment to the Kansas Constitution pursuant to which all cities gain home rule power. These statutes are not uniformly applicable, so it's become pretty common for cities to use their home rule power to charter out of certain requirements to put these statutes on similar footing as applicable statutes for the city to issue bonds for paving improvements or public building improvements. I think that Debbie mentioned Main Traffic Way. You know, as it stands right now, the city by simple majority can go issue bonds for a paving project, but it cannot, if the amount of the project is above a certain amount, go issue the same amount of bonds for, you know, a park improvement project such as the baseball stadium project that's being discussed. And so I think a lot of cities have just chosen to basically put all sorts of projects on the same level as far as a policy standpoint and their flexibility to issue debt for those projects, whether it be a paving project, a bridge project, a park project, you know, a water project, basically. Treat all projects the same and allow the governing body the ability to finance such projects as it chooses. That's kind of a long-winded answer, but I think, yeah, the original intent of the statute would be that if you were going to issue bonds in excess of a certain amount in any calendar year, then it would be, you know, subject to an election. That's certainly the straightforward reading of the statute.
Thank you, because if you look at our charter ordinances, whenever we needed to finance something that wasn't included, we just created an exception. And I'm all for streamlining things, but part of my brain just has a problem with creating, it's like-
We created an exception that had to have the protest period that allowed somebody to protest and force it to go to an election, basically.
So are we eliminating most categories? We did one for public, for the Field House, but we have a limit on how much we're going to bond for Field Houses, but eh, chances are, we're not going to be bonding any more Field Houses in the next 30, 40 years.
Yeah, that number was set, recognizing what we knew about that particular project at that time.
Right, so it's, in a way, it just looks like an easy way around the limit for an election. But I'm guessing the $100,000 in 1955, I don't know what that is in terms of public projects in 2022, but I'm sure it's much higher than $100,000.
And just to be clear, it's still in the statutes at $100,000 as the limit. So, you know, your question about the applicability, it essentially forces your hand to have to do something.
Do something. All right, so we would then just basically open, what, now, I think there's a list of projects, types of projects that we would be.
Sure, one of the options is that we get rid of that altogether, and there's no limit whatsoever.
Right, the one in Lawrence listed like 60 different types of projects, but ours would just not have any limits.
Ours would be whatever you direct it to be. That's what we're trying to get, that information.
Invariably, the next year, there'll be a project that's not on that list.
Correct.
All right, I'm just trying to get my, so what, all right, so we're just saying we don't need to worry about what a reasonable amount for 2022 is. What's reasonable is what we can afford, looking at our financials.
Well, if we choose to go to Option 2, which would be to set new limits on any of these categories, we would want to look to see what's a more reasonable amount today as it was compared to when we set that originally.
And as you said earlier, even then, we still have to, at the day we want to approve it, we have to look at our-
Correct.
Percentage of that.
If we say it's $2 million for a bridge, and we come in and the bridge is $4 million, we're going to be, we're going to do the same thing as we're doing today.
Or if we have too much debt, we won't be approving anything.
Correct.
If you set a limit at $10 million, it doesn't mean we can do 15 of those projects at $10 million.
Right.
And you're still going to have to make a strategic decision of, you know, the appropriateness of the financing of that particular project.
I appreciate, this is something I just had to talk out loud and hear comments live. All right, let's see if there's any public comment here. Now, this is more important than water going under a bridge. Why it has any comments? Anyone on Zoom? No, all right. Commissioner Hoppick?
When I read this at first, I was a little bit like Commissioner Longbine. I had an issue with us just kind of blanketing and saying we could issue all the debt we wanted to. But as I thought about it and as we've discussed, we still have to, as a governing body, know how you're going to finance that. You've got to look at your overall debt. It seems like we've always just kind of had that workaround. And so I, and if we were to go in and to try to set a new limit for everything, I'm not sure what that limit would be and how you'd come up with that, and, you know, and would that be valid in five years, you know? So I guess at this point, I'm looking at the steps that we have to go through when we do bonding. It gives plenty of opportunity for input from the public, gives us plenty of input, or whoever's sitting up here as a commission to work through the financing of the bonds. So I'm probably for, and it appears that more cities are moving towards just rescinding Charter Ordinance Number 39, so that's probably the direction I'd be okay with. But it didn't happen just immediately. I had to be a little bit like you and think through it.
And what we, if we were to move in that direction, this would just authorize staff to come back with?
We would then have to prepare a Charter Ordinance. You'd have to pass the Charter Ordinance. The 60-day protest period applicable to all charter ordinances would have to run, and then it would take, and assuming that it did pass without a protest petition, then it can take effect.
So we would potentially have the same discussion again at that-
Yes.
Time, okay. Commissioner Longbine?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Hoppick. I'm a little more comfortable with this now that I've heard a little more explanation. So, yeah, I guess, yeah, I would be okay with Option 1.
Have any of the bonds we've authorized been subject to a protest petition in the last five, 10 years that you can think of?
Subjected to a successful protest?
Or just subject to it, and as far as the category of the amount that we bonded?
Well, each one of these charter ordinances listed here that created a dollar amount category, each one of those was subject to a protest petition. But if the question is, have we ever had one, an actual protest petition submitted?
Right, well, these probably wouldn't because we haven't built another animal shelter, haven't built another aquatic park, haven't built another Field House.
Right, but at the time we amended the Charter Ordinance to make way to build an animal shelter, that would have been the opportunity to protest that Charter Ordinance in advance of that project going forward.
So those would have been more actual votes on the project itself as opposed to this would just be our ability to spend?
Correct. I'm going to, I'm looking at Greg. He has a look on his face like maybe he knows of-
No, I was just trying to make sure that I was processing the mayor's question correctly, and I know that's what you were trying to do as well. Was your question, Mayor, whether any of the times that a Charter Ordinance was considered and adopted by the governing body, whether it prompted a protest?
Well, I was wondering about that, but also, has the category of any of the bonding we've done been, or has it fallen into a category that would have, could have triggered a protest?
If we're doing bonding within the provisions of the Charter Ordinance, then it's not subject to protest. It's the actual adoption of the Charter Ordinance that's subject to a protest petition. So that's why I was saying it, you know, adopting the Charter Ordinance to create the exception to be able to issue the debt is what would have been subject to protest. I'm not aware of any that were protested, but I don't-
I'm going to use a very politically poor-taste analogy, but it would be like giving Congress one time blanket authority to raise the national debt, but having no ability to hold them back once they keep raising the national debt, because you gave them the authority to do it. So if you wanted to stop it, you should have stopped it, you know, when you gave them the ability to raise it.
Correct. I mean, I think we're much more local. I think you're going to hear about it at the grocery store, and whether it's you as the governing body or Congress, you're thinking about, you know, what your constituents want for the purpose of reelection, and that would be, you know, that local feedback would be where you'd hear about it as a city commission.
Right.
So hypothetically speaking, if our successors aren't the most fiscally-minded folks, the catch-all would be that legal debt limit? That's kind of our safety net?
Yes.
Okay, let's, want to make sure, clarify that.
That's correct. And also, when we bring projects forward for debt financing, we also have, especially during the budget process, as you'll see, we have to levy our debt, mill levy, in order to cover the cost of that. So what you'll see is that we'll be talking about that a lot. What is this particular funding, bonding going to do to that? Do we have enough mill levy to cover the cost of this new debt? So there's a lot of discussion about how it's going to be paid for as well as what that total is.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. Any commissioner feeling up to making a motion? I lost my page here. I will. Mayor Davis, I move to direct staff to bring forward the repeal of Charter Ordinance Number 39 and a replacement Charter Ordinance that does not set limits on the amount of bonds that can be issued per year.
Second.
It may be moved and seconded to move to direct staff to bring forward the repeal of Charter Ordinance Number 39 and a replacement Charter Ordinance that does not set limits on the amount of bonds that can be issued per year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. We may move on to 6.2.
Item 6.2, approve ordinance number 22-11108 on second reading, amending the future land use map of the Salina-Kansas Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation of property located on the south side of West Cloud Street, west of Broadway Boulevard from future suburban residential to future urban residential in support of multifamily housing in this location.
Thank you. This ordinance was passed on first reading April the 4th. We've had no comments since then. There are no material changes.
Mayor Davis, again, I'll need to recuse myself from both 6.2 and 6.3.
All right, there's at least three of us left, all right. You said 6.2 and 6.3, correct. Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for staff? Any public comment questions? Is there a motion to be made?
Mayor, aye. Move we approve ordinance number 22-11108 on second reading. I'll second that.
Okay. It may be moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-11108 on second reading. May I roll call, please?
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. Motion carries three to nothing, and we will move to 6.3.
Item 6.3, approve ordinance number 22-11109 on second reading, changing the zoning district classification from MHP and R1 to R-2.5 to allow construction of multifamily apartments at property addressed at 721 West Cloud Street.
And this was also passed on first reading last week, and we've had no comments, and there are no changes to the-
Correct, Mayor.
Correct, okay. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Any public comment questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve ordinance number 22-11109 on second reading.
Second.
It may be moved and seconded to approve ordinance 22-11109 on second reading. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye, that passes three to zero, and if we could ask Commissioner Hoppick to come All righty. Thank you. We'll move to item 6.4.
Item 6.4, approve actions in response to bids received for vehicle and equipment purchases for 2022.
Ms. Pack?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. 2022 SubCIP was approved on January 3rd, 2022. Within that was an allocation for vehicle and equipment replacement for multiple departments and funding out of various funds for a total of $2,34,220. Since that time, staff has solicited bids for 18 of the pieces of vehicles and equipment that were approved on the SubCIP. The estimates for those bids were made, just a note, in May of 2021. And as we all know, the economy has seen double-digit inflation, large jumps in cost of fuel and steel and supply issues. And due to these extenuating circumstances, staff is seeing bids that exceed the original cost estimates in most areas. So we did have one bid that came in under budget and that we are recommending to approve. That was for the 25-yard Packer truck from Truck Component Services. There was a list, a whole list of bids that I provided that were not to the lowest bidder, but also came in over budget. I gave kind of explanation and reasoning for those. It was also attached in the details sheets from the bid sheets. I also have staff from Central Garage and other departments here that can answer any questions about those. I'm not going to go through those individually, because I will repeat this at the end for what your action needs to be. We did have several bids, three, four bids, that were to the lowest bidder, but were also over budget. And then, in addition to the bids, the Parks Department looked at cooperative bidding for the sprayer that they had approved on the 2020 SubCIP. After some additional, that bid, in the cooperative bid, came in well over budget, about $6,000. So after discussions with the department, we decided that to go back and do some specifications, to redo the specifications from a self-propelled option to a pull-type option, and put out some new specifications to see if we can get a more competitive bid. We'll also look at the cooperative bidding option to see if that's financially feasible for that particular piece of equipment. We had some bids that we rejected because they didn't either meet or we didn't feel like they were competitive. So there's two of those. We had two bids that, two items that we did not receive any bids. In summary, as far as the budget's concerned, we originally budgeted a $930,000 transfer from sales tax, which is the annual allocation for vehicles and equipment, into the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund that was established last year. That fund had a fund balance of $500,000 at the beginning of the year. We recommend, we're recommending bids of $862,168. We have remaining bids estimated at $261,500, which would put us over budget, $193,668 in the vehicle and equipment. Bid sanitation had budgeted $160,000, or $160,000. Their recommended bid is a little over $98,000, which came in under budget. Solid Waste had budgeted $193,800. Their bids came in at $188,572, but they also have some remaining items, which could possibly put them over budget- which could possibly put them over budget of about $30,000. Their particular budget will, overage would come from an item that they had budgeted for a vehicle that's gonna be coming out of the leased program instead of a purchase program. So we had budgeted $38,000 for the purchase of that in 2022, so that overage would come out of that budgeted amount. Staff has identified, the other thing I wanted to mention was that we, with these, we intentionally budgeted, or we intentionally provided you a list of items for SubCIP that totaled $138,420. That was over the original allocation of $930,000 and the sales tax allocation, which would have put us over the $930,000, $108,000 anyway. That was coming from the capital reserve. Also, the street sweeper is going to be sold on Purple Wave. We anticipate that we could get $20,000 to $30,000 from that, so that will reduce our budget overage. That's not included in the numbers. It's estimated that if the remaining items come in on budget, that the ending fund balance in the Vehicle and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund will be around $325,000. So as a recap, for the action items that we do, or we are proposing, so that you can make your motion based on the recommendation, we are proposing that the 25-yard Packer truck be awarded to Truck Component Services for $98,816. The road grader maintainer be awarded to Foley Equipment for $226,547. The five-yard dump truck with snow plow and salt spreader be awarded to Master Tech Truck and Equipment for $180,491. The five-yard dump truck with snow plow be awarded to Master Tech Truck and Equipment for $157,229. The salt spreader and 10-foot plow be awarded to American Equipment Company for $34,874. The 4,000-gallon truck, water truck be awarded to Master Tech Truck and Equipment for $175,434. The mechanical street sweeper be awarded to Truck Component Services for $227,745. The first salt spreader, well, there's two salt spreaders, both go to American Equipment Company for $17,641 each. The two roll-off containers be awarded to Downing Sales and Service for $13,138. The bid for the 300-gallon self-propelled sprayer to be rebid. The fairway mower item to be rebid. The four portable fences to be rebid, and the two daily cover tarps to be rebid. So staff has identified the following options. You could approve the purchase of the 2022 vehicles and equipment as recommended, authorize staff to proceed with purchases and rebids, and authorize the city manager to sign contracts with the selected vendors. You could approve these with amendments as you deem appropriate. You could postpone consideration of these and provide staff with direction on additional information you'd like to have. Or you could vote to not approve these as recommended and provide us with direction, which could result in rebidding delay of delivery and possible cost increases. Staff recommends option number one. And like I said, I would be here to stand for questions. I also have staff from Central Garage here and some of the other departments that have purchases on this particular item, if you have any questions on a particular item.
Commissioner Longbein?
How did you get the trash truck to come in $60,000 underbid?
It's a miracle.
Does that just lock?
That's a real question. Was that the one that has a really good trade-in value?
Jim Toits, Director of Public Works, I actually thought the same question. When I saw the bid, I was pretty surprised, pleasantly so. Certainly the highest trade-in that we've ever received for one of our trucks. I think, keep in mind that the, when we automated, we eliminated the worst of all the Packer trucks that we had. So now, the annual Packer replacement is based on newer models of trucks. I think that combined with just what you're seeing in the industry as a whole, that the value of used vehicles is increasing exponentially, tremendously. I think the combination of those things is what enabled us to get such a great bid on the Packer truck.
Yeah, I just. This is just a conventional truck.
Yes.
Yeah, not the automated ones.
Correct.
Yeah, I just saw a deal the other day that was talking about what's caused inflation, and used vehicles was the leading one. I think it was around a 40% increase over what they were last year, so pretty substantial, so. Got anything else you wanna trade in?
Just a shame Enterprise doesn't have sweeper trucks. Commissioner Lenkowitz, do you have any questions?
I do not.
All right. Any questions, comments from the public? None online? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve purchase of 2022 vehicles and equipment as recommended. Authorize staff to proceed with the purchases and rebids, and authorize the city manager to sign contracts with selected vendors.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the 2022 vehicles and equipment as recommended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. And 7.1.
Item 7.1, approve resolution number 22-8043, approving a performance agreement related to the issuance of taxable multifamily housing revenue bonds for a project to be constructed by Cedarhurst of Salina Real Estate, LLC, and authorizing execution of related documents.
Ms. Driscoll, how you doing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This item is being brought to you as a request by the applicant, Cedarhurst of Salina Real Estate, LLC. As a reminder, this project is a 70,000-square-foot assisted living or memory care facility with 58 assisted living and 22 memory care apartment units. The proposed facility would be located at Ohio Street, just west of the Knox Stan Pitt Lake. You last took action on this item October 25 of 2021. The city commission passed Resolution 21-7997 regarding an IRB for this project, specifically related to multifamily housing. The resolution set property tax relief at 10%, or, let's see, sorry, set property tax relief for 10 years, 100%, not to exceed $15 million, and also sales tax on construction materials purchased and used in the construction of the project. Part of that package was a development agreement. It's a standard document that we use when doing IRBs. The performance agreement is a tool that helps the city commission make sure your desired outcomes associated with economic incentives are met. We use these both with RHIDs and IRBs, and particularly for an IRB, a performance agreement rather than a development agreement. The current performance agreement establishes requirements related to the city's housing policy or the economics incentive policy for housing. And that particularly drills down to cost of units, timeline in which units would be complete, and the type of units. The request being made by the developer is a revision of the development agreement. In your packet, you will find a specific table that went through those changes. At first glance, these seem pretty administrative, and in general, they are, due to many of the same reasons that Finance Director Debbie Pack mentioned. Costs going up on several items we've talked about, the same as being experienced by the developer. A lag due to shortage of laborers, challenges with getting materials, have set some of their proposed deadlines in the development agreement askew. So they have proposed a change to the date in which the document would be started, and then have also highlighted those times that the development agreement would need to be redated to April 11th versus September 27th. And then mayors have changed since this document was prepared, so that name change has been prepared. The legal description, this project was both annexed, platted, zoned, all those things at the same time. And this action was taken while the legal description was being completed and has now been inserted. The two main parts that I would like to note, and one of the reasons staff thought it was important to bring these changes to you was not necessarily from this administrative point, but from the two pieces that relate to the two appendices. You have one that relates to key dates. There's close of purchase on the land, commencement of construction on the land, and then final completion and commencement of tenant leases. Those were dated for November, April, and October, and are now dated for June, July, and January. Granted, the policy, if we refer back to the city's housing economic incentives policy, says you need to be able to complete construction within three years. This would actually have the project completed within two, so it's that same window of time, but it has moved a couple of months. Then also, back to the number of units. As a reminder, the housing incentive policy for IRBs in particular does not have a per-unit cost. That's very focused on the RHID. IRB does not. But it does have a minimum number of units, and that's at least 50. So this project still exceeds that minimum number. But the applicant did want to update that their range of monthly lease prices has changed. They originally had it set from $4,000 to $7,000. It is now from $3,000 to $8,000. This is a slightly different type of housing product compared to a typical apartment or townhomes or something like that, where there's the assisted living and the memory care side of this that involves a different level of services. So besides the unit cost, there are these services associated with the unit costs. So the developer asked for that to be updated. On a fiscal note, just reminding the body that this does not have any change to the action that you took in September. This would remain the same, as I said. 100% abatement on property taxes for 10 years, with the levied amount not to exceed $15 million, as well as sales tax exemption for applicable construction materials associated with the development. With that, before the commission, you have Resolution 22-8043. The body can either choose to approve the resolution, approve the resolution with amendments, postpone consideration on the resolution to specify date and time with direction to staff, or you can vote to deny the resolution and provide additional direction to staff regarding how the commission would like to proceed. This resolution is specifically related to the development agreement. And this item coming back before you, you have essentially already approved IRBs, but it's this piece of the documents associated with that that is brought back in front of you for changes. In the packet, you would have found the resolution drafted and a performance agreement as revised by our bond counsel. I believe available online for any additional questions would be a representative of the developer for Cedarhurst, and also Sarah Steele with Gilmore &amp; Bell, our bond counsel.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments, Ms. Driscoll?
Yeah, I really don't have a big problem with it. It just prolongs the project about 90 days final, so not a big deal. I guess my question would come into, I noticed they went from $4,000 to $3,000 as the beginning. Is that independent living?
I would suggest kind of detailed answers to that come from the developer who's operating. I, from a policy perspective, since we don't have a specific price point that's required, I can't say that that's a bad or a good thing. So I think Nick Dwyer is on, Nick Dwyer with Cedarhurst Real Estate, LLC would probably be best to answer that question, Commissioner Hoppe.
Yeah, hey, this is Nick with Dover. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. No, there will not be independent living in the project. We just wanted to update the agreement and give it a broader range for the prices, just due to the fact that, kind of what Lauren alluded to. There is assisted living and memory care, and then when you break it down even further, the different sizes of apartments, studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, based on their location within the building. And then each resident has their own tailored care plan, which is specific to that person individually. So we just wanted to allow for a larger range to accommodate, you know, the wide range of folks that will be living in the facility.
Thank you.
And I take it the, and it's not a big deal, I mean, it doesn't affect, but those are just the beginning dollar amounts for care, and that can be increased at any time in the future, correct? I mean, we don't have anything that controls that.
I do not have anything within the development agreement that specifically addresses that.
Which makes sense. I just didn't think there was, okay.
All right. Any questions, comments from the public?
I have one. Maybe Mr. Dwyer can answer. Memory care, will this provide services to people who do not live at the facility? Or is it just a resident thing?
No, it will be just for residents. So the large portion of the facility is assisted living, and then there's a smaller 22-unit memory care wing, which is specific for folks who suffer Alzheimer's and related dementias. And they will be living in the facility and receiving care from staff members. It will not provide outside care to the public.
So I'm assuming that that section will be a full-service, long-term care?
Correct, yes.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the public, comments? Okay, bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve Resolution Number 22-8043.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 22-8043. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Dwyer, for being around to answer questions. Any other business? All right. We'll come to the citizens forum, which is an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium to share questions, comments, concerns, and limit it to three minutes, if you don't mind. Don't jockey to be last. That window will close. No one? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.